I'd like to welcome everybody.
Thank you.
To the special meeting of the Guyman Utilities Authorities, who we're going to start with. And this will take the place of our regular meeting, which was scheduled for next Thursday, but due to holidays, we've rescheduled. So at this time, I'd like to invite Jeremy Crenson from the First Baptist Church to come up and give our invocation. That way we can get you on camera.
Sounds good. Let's pray together. Father God, we recognize your great mercy to us tonight. You have not treated us as our sins deserve. You have given us mercy upon mercy. And you've been kind to this city. And so tonight, we present ourselves to you, recognizing your sovereignty and your right to rule us. Father, we thank you for the gift of your grace in your son, Jesus, during this time of the year. And so, at this Christmas season, Father, we ask you to devote us to brotherly love tonight. We pray that our love would not be hypocritical, but that we would prefer others above ourselves, Father. We pray you teach us not to be wise in our own eyes, but that you would cause us to defer to one another, to lean on your wisdom in our need, and to recognize the insights that you give to this group of people whom you have designated to make decisions. Father, we pray that you would cause us to, as far as it depends on us, to be at peace with one another. And Father, ultimately, Father, we pray that you would allow us not to be overcome with evil, but to overcome evil with good. That you may be glorified, and may your son, Jesus, be glorified as we are faithful to carry out the business of this town at this meeting tonight. We pray this all in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Mr. Curtis, would you lead our flags?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting door. Agenda item number two is attendance roll call.
Peterson.
Here.
Swager.
Here.
Crone.
Here.
Alvedras.
Here.
Livinggood.
Here.
Hawkins.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Agenda item number three is approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action on Resolution 17-02. A resolution of the trustees of the Guyman Utilities Authority of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, establishing an investment policy for the Guyman Utilities Authority. I think this is a year, annual deal that we do?
Yes.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion. We approve Resolution 1702.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number five is public comments and announcements. Public comments and announcements. Agenda item number six, new business? There is none? We'll adjourn as the Guyman Utilities Authority. We're going to reconvene as the Guyman Airport Authority. Call this meeting door, the special meeting of the Guyman Airport Authority. Agenda item number two is approve the minutes of the special meeting of October 12, 2017.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of October 12, 2017, item two.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number three is discussion and possible action on Resolution number 17-01. A resolution of the trustees of the Guyman Airport Authority of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, the municipal trust, establishing an investment policy for the Guyman Airport Authority. Same thing holds true, this is an annual resolution.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution number 17-01.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action on approval of the airport lease agreement with Greg Downing and the Guyman Airport Authority. The lease agreement is attached. Any discussion, question, motion?
I make a motion that we approve airport lease agreement with Greg Downing and the Guyman Airport Authority, item four.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crone.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Any new business? We'll adjourn as the Guyman Airport Authority. We'll reconvene as the Guyman Utilities Authority. Special.
Industrial.
Industrial.
Oh, I went over there. Let me go back. That was the first one on the list.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll convene as the Guyman Industrial Authority. Agenda item number two is approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 13, 2017.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting, 7/13/17.
Okay, any public comments or announcements?
You got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
I got all. Take a deep breath here. I've got a motion in a second. It's going to get overdrive.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Trust me, it's not the first mistake I've made today. Okay, public comments and announcements. Public comments and announcements. Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action on approval of a budget amendment number one for the Guyman Industrial Authority Fund number 84 for an increase of $623,852.
And this is to... Was this for the... Which industrial authority, which project is this for?
I think that's related to the TIF. I think it's the Seaboard TIF agreement.
Okay. And this will pass through. We get to see it as a go-to.
We have about a year and a half left on that TIF agreement.
I make a motion that we approve budget amendment number one for the Guyman Industrial Authority Fund number 84 and the increase of $623,852.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras.
This was because of all the litigation that happened in the beginning, right?
Yeah, it had to be extended. The initial term had to be extended.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action on Resolution number 1701. Establishing an investment policy for the Guyman Industrial Authority.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 1701, establish an investment policy for the Guyman Industrial Authority.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Is there any new business? Not adjourned. Now we get to go. We'll reconvene as the Guyman Utilities Authority. Don't we? We already did this. See, you got them messed up.
Got a hot date?
Started at the end and worked backwards. That's right. We should have done that. I'll be okay.
That's right.
As long as you all don't get too confused. I don't know where I'm at. Okay. We'll call the order of the special meeting of the Guyman City Council. Agenda item two, we've done. Agenda item number three, public comments and announcements. Agenda item number four is a public hearing on annexation, a petition of Stuart E. Lauer for annexation of property adjacent and contiguous to the City of Guyman. Does anybody have any public comments that they'd like to make on this request? Okay. So if I have any public comments they'd like to make? Does anyone have any public comments they'd like to make? Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number five. Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action on approval of ordinance number 828, an ordinance annexing to the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, certain real estate adjacent to and contiguous to the limits of said city, providing for severability and repealing all ordinances in conflict. The ordinance is attached, and this is to annex a small 0.81 acre tract of land. And you all have a map. Is there any discussion, question?
Mr. Petty, can we declare this an emergency? Because it's not on the agenda.
Pardon?
Can we declare it an emergency because it's not on the agenda, stated that way?
Yes, if it's part of the... Is it on the ordinance? It's on the ordinance, isn't it? Should be the last clause in the ordinance.
No.
No.
The emergency clause isn't on there?
No.
Okay, well, you'll just... The only difference is you have to publish the ordinance instead of the summary, so you won't have an emergency clause. Okay?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 828, annexing to the City of Guyman's real estate, congen... The limits of the city.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crone.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number six, discussion and possible action on approval of budget amendments for the following funds. 6.1 is budget amendment number three for the Guyman Development Fund 16 for an increase of $8,400. Budget amendment number one is for the sales tax, GUA CIF Fund 48, for an increase of $23,870. Good music. That'll wake you up. If it was Larry's, we'd all be better. 6.2 is budget amendment number one for the sales tax, GUA CIF Fund 48 for an increase of $23,870. Budget amendment number two for the Guyman Housing Authority Fund 60 for a decrease of $35,896. Questions?
The only question I've got is on the Housing Authority Fund number 60. Does that take all the money out of that fund?
I think there's a remaining balance of about $3,000, but essentially transfers all the money out of the Housing Authority back to general fund and to GUA.
Okay.
Yes. And that closes that project out.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve budget amendment number three for the Guyman Development Fund, Fund 16, for an increase of $8,400. Make a motion that we approve budget amendment number one for the sales tax, GUA CIF Fund 48, for an increase of $23,870. And budget amendment number one for the Guyman Housing Authority Fund 60 for a decrease of $35,896.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crone.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action on approval of Resolution number 17-18, adopting the operating budget for the 2018 fiscal year and authorizing budget transfers.
Mayor, I have two handouts. I distributed the November report from Sally Hawkins that shows the account balances. And I also handed out a two-page summary highlighting the changes in the budget document that we discussed at last council meeting. And I think you also have an attachment that includes the entire budget document for you to look at. I only have one minor change for tonight. I would ask that the council consider changing the title of the position we were going to add from city treasurer to finance services manager. And I have a rough draft of that job description, if you would like to see one. The reason for doing that is that we plan to hire someone to fill Sally's position as a part-time treasurer. And I think by changing the job title to this new position to financial services, it will give us more flexibility in trying to address the administrative side of our operations. And we're looking for a person who can help us track our capital projects and our grant programs. So we think this gives us more flexibility in that regard. So if you don't object to that, I'd like to make that minor change.
It's a great idea.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 17-18, adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2018, with the change of the job title from treasury to finance service manager.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action on Resolution number 17-19. A resolution of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, establishing an investment policy for the City of Guyman.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution number 17-19.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action on approval of site access agreement between T-Mobile Central LLC and the City of Guyman. Site access agreement is attached.
This agreement is identical to the Verizon agreement that you approved, provided or approved earlier in the year, with one exception, and this access agreement is requesting a six-month window for them to evaluate the site and determine whether or not it's feasible for them to install the equipment. The second step would be, once they do that, bringing forward a permit for them, for the council to consider, to issue to T-Mobile for installation of equipment, communication equipment. I might point out, if you haven't gone by, today, they finished the installation, Verizon finished their installation, and I think it looks really sharp. They matched the paint for the tower, and their responsibility is to maintain their equipment. And we should be activating that system early in January of 2018.
Any other discussion, questions, motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the site access agreement between T-Mobile Central LLC and the City of Guyman.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crone.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number 10 is discussion and possible action on approval of a five-year digital mailing system equipment lease between Pitney Bowes and the City of Guyman.
Replacing equipment. We have an old postage meter system, and it needs to be replaced. And we think this arrangement saves us... Mr., remember, $50 a month, something like that, $75 a month?
Does this have to be renewed yearly, though? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the five-year digital mailing system equipment lease between Pitney Bowes and the City of Guyman.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number 11 is discussion and possible action on renewal of the fixed base operator airport lease agreement between the Guyman Airport Authority and Greg Downing. I think everybody's had an opportunity to read his... I believe, are there any substantial changes from the last one?
No.
Okay. Any discussion, action, motion?
I make a motion that we renew the FBO airport lease agreement between the Guyman Airport Authority and Greg Downing, item 11.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number 12 is discussion and possible action to appoint or reappoint members of various boards and commissions whose terms expired December 31 of 2017. Most of the... On the list, most of the names are people that are on boards or boards came up and fit them up for renomination or renewal. Mr. Petty, you may want to explain the Board of Adjustments and the Planning and Zoning Commission about them being able to have the same five people on both boards?
Same people can serve on both boards. There's no prohibition on that. They actually have a different mission. The Board of Adjustment obviously reviews applications for variances, and the appeal from the board of... I just lost my train of thought there. From that board goes to district court. Planning Commission, their recommendations, whether they approve or deny, comes to the council for ratification. So there isn't much overlap. I mean, occasionally, there might be some variance request that's connected to a rezoning, but typically, rezoning, replating, final plating occurs first, and then variances occur later, when someone builds something that's encroaching upon adjoining property or in a setback or something. So they are related, but different.
These two boards would... They might meet at the same time, but they would either like us to have two agendas like we have.
Correct.
The GUA and the City Council.
Correct. I think the way we're thinking of setting it up, where the Planning Commission would meet at the regular time at 6:00, and then it'd be followed by the Board of Adjustment.
And on those... Vice Mayor and I sit down and took staff's recommendation and applications that have been made for those to combine them and make other things. That's our recommendation. Any discussion, motion?
Is this everybody on the golf board?
No, these are...
No.
These are three. These are reappointments.
They're just what are up.
Yeah, these are...
Just the three.
Most of these are ones that are up. On the Board of Adjustments, there were four openings because of people resigned. So you'll notice that the terms have been staggered, and those are appointments that would fill unexpired terms. And Mr. Curtis was up for reappointment on the planning and zoning, anyway.
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointments and reappointments of members of various boards and commissions whose terms expire December 31, 2017.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crone.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
All right. Agenda item number 13 is discussion and possible action to determine meeting location of boards and commissions. I think I've got a handout that Levona put together for us. Basically, all boards and committees is going to meet here in City Hall, except for the library. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the airport?
And the airport authority. Okay, thank you.
And they'll meet at their conference room. Any discussion, questions, motion?
Did it... So every one of these boards are going to meet here, right?
Yes.
And that's what we're setting? It's not going to be like last year where we set it, and then we had all that mess?
That's the theory.
So that's set right now?
Yes. That's what we're proposing, recommending.
I'm okay with it if we stick to it.
Any other questions, motions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting locations of boards and commissions for 2018.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number 14 is possible executive session to discuss purchase or appraisal of real property suit to Title 25 Oklahoma Statutes 2011, Section 307b3.
Make a motion we go into executive session?
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number 14 is possible executive session to discuss purchase or appraisal of real property suit to Title 25 Oklahoma Statutes 2011, Section 307b3.
Make a motion we go into executive session?
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number 14 is possible executive session to discuss purchase or appraisal of real property suit to Title 25 Oklahoma Statutes 2011, Section 307b3.
Make a motion we go into executive session?
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
If you'll excuse us, we'll be adjourned for a while.
I'm over, we'll reconvene.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second to reconvene.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
There was no action taken. Agenda item number fifteen is reports and comments from the city major and council members.
A couple of points. One is that during our budget discussions, we said that we were going to, um, reduce the amount of money we're setting aside to stock the lake. And so I think at this point, we're going to suspend any issuance of permits or licenses until we make that decision on how we're going to move forward. Uh, reminder that January eleventh, we want to have a workshop, council workshop to discuss utility issues, and Elks Edition, we have the survey. We've had a couple of meetings with the utility companies, and we'd like to basically, uh, present that to the council and kind of let you know what we found and what our issues are. Uh, so we'd like to have a workshop either before or after the council meeting on the eleventh. Any preference? Before?
Before.
Five o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, and then the final, uh, item is that, uh, we hopefully will have a final draft of the I B T S agreement ready to put on the January eleventh agenda for your consideration.
On the licenses, we're going to suspend the fishing licenses and that?
Yes.
Can they go ahead and fish after the first of the year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but it doesn't make any sense to issue trout permits or licenses if we're not going to stock it or if we, we don't know how we're going to stock it, so. Yes.
I have a couple short ones. Uh, could we revisit the, uh, the Vibe? We, we launched an initiative with Vibe, um, a couple of years ago, maybe a year ago, two years ago, about them. The polls being safety issues in the community, so I think we need to revisit that.
I would agree.
There is some issues. A couple of citizens have brought it up to me, a couple of owner, landowners. So we need to revisit that. Um, and you mentioned the I B T S contract?
Yes.
Correct. We just need to keep looking at, uh, avenues and ways to bring back more departments.
Okay.
I'm just going to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and hope it's a blessed one.
See you next year.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Merry Christmas.
Well, I want to remind everybody, I had some, we had some folks up last week that were from all over that were on the, here for the wind catcher deal, and, and had a lot of comments of how they were so impressed with the lights out on the Centennial Park as they stayed the holiday in. So if you haven't got out and seen those yet, go drive around and see them. The Rose Garden Club put some lights up at the lake. And if you haven't been to Panhandle State, take the ten, short drive to Goodwill and see the lights on campus. It's, uh, I haven't got over yet, but everybody tells me it's just.
Lights look pretty good on Main Street, too.
They look good.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, we don't want to wish every, we're going into the new year, this is our last meeting, and, uh, let's go into the new year with a positive attitude. Build, make our, make our city great. You know, again, I, same way. Want to wish all of our employees and all our staff the best holiday they could possibly have, and for all of our policemen and firemen, we hope you have a very quiet holiday and don't have to do anything, you know, safely. But, uh, and to each one of you gentlemen, a happy, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and hope you, hope you enjoy it and have a safe one, and we'll see you later. Anybody else? We're adjourned.